Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, May 1st, 2018. It is nice to see a large number of folks here in the audience. That's not always the case, so I'm sure it's the beautiful spring weather that has done it. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for roll call from our clerk, please.
Councilmember Durham.
Here.
Councilmember Dorman.
Here.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doran Becker.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here. If I can invite Sergeant Hallman to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please join us and stand if you can.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sergeant. Next up is the adoption of our agenda, and we do want to just recognize there has been a minor revision to the resolution that's part of Item 7B. Steve, did you want to address that?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. There's been a minor change of language. The council was all provided, the ordinance as well, or, excuse me, the revised resolution. Copies were on the dais and also made available. So with that, we would just advise you that the recommendation, if you're adopting the item, would be to use the revised resolution.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda with the revised resolution for Item And could you verbally, if one is motioning?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda with revised Item 7B.
Did we get the button also?
Yes, she did.
It's not showing up for me.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just in case it automatically shows up.
I'm gonna do it.
We're still working through our technology. There it is.
Okay, there we go.
All right.
Thank you.
We have three proclamations this evening. First one I'd like to do is a proclamation recognizing May as Bike Month and May 10th as Bike-to-Work Day. So, Mr. Patrick Band, if you could come and join me at the podium.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you again. This is a proclamation recognizing Bike Month and Bike-to-Work Day. Whereas the town of Yountville is committed to making our community safer and more convenient for bicycle commuters and encouraging increased bicycle use. Whereas the town of Yountville Bicycle Plan adopted in 2012 identifies benefits of bicycle ridership, including reduced congestion, reduced greenhouse gas emissions, and the public health benefits of active transportation. Whereas riding a bicycle for transportation and recreation is a fun way to get around, and riding to work just three days a week can have significant health benefits, including improved cardiovascular strength and weight loss. Whereas an increasing number of visitors to our community are using bicycles and other active transportation for trips to our local hotels, restaurants, tasting rooms, parks, and open spaces. Whereas programs like Bike-to-Work Day and Bike-to-School Day are an important opportunity to both educate and encourage members of our community. Whereas the town of Yountville prioritizes the safety of all of our residents and visitors and encourages both bicycle riders and vehicle drivers to share the road and be respectful of each other as they use the roads. Whereas the town of Yountville encourages everyone to participate in Bike-to-Work Day on May 10th, 2018, and Napa Bike Fest on Saturday, May 5th, 2018, and to consider bicycling for short trips more often. Now therefore be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, as the mayor of the town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Bike Month and Thursday, May 10th, 2018, as Bike-to-Work Day in the town of Yountville. So, thank you for representing the cause.
Thank you very much. Absolutely. There you go. And I've got a little something for you, so, just a quick little announcement. So we'll actually have 27 Energizer stations located throughout the county for folks to ride on their bikes on Bike-to-Work Day. In case you don't get out that morning, I brought you a tote bag. So we'll be handing these out to everybody who stops by our Energizer stations.
All right.
They'll be filled with goodies, little mini bike lights and cliff bars, things like that, so wanted to share the bike love.
Looks like you have a lot of community support.
A lot of community support, which is great.
Very good.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I have two more proclamations. You better have something for us.
(Laughter).
Oh, pressure.
No, I'm just kidding.
High bar.
The next item is a proclamation recognizing May also as Mental Health Awareness Month, and I believe, I'm gonna try to get this right, Rowena Korobkin?
Yes.
All right. And Frank Smithwater, I believe, are here to accept the proclamation representing Health and Human Services Mental Health Division. If you would please join me at the podium.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Hi, nice to see you.
This is a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month 2018. Whereas one in four individuals will experience mental health issues in their lifetimes, which can affect parents, sisters, brothers, spouses, coworkers, and others in our lives. And whereas the Mental Health Division seeks to reduce barriers to access, improve community outreach and engagement that ensures competent care to communities throughout culturally diverse services, through culturally diverse services and policies. Whereas a holistic approach to services, which includes prevention and early intervention, is an effective way to meet the needs of individuals at risk of developing mental health issues, individuals who are experiencing early onset of the symptoms of mental illness, or individuals with serious mental illness or severe emotional disturbance. Whereas there is a strong body of research documenting that with support and treatment, between 70 and 90 percent of individuals with mental illness have a significant reduction in symptoms and improved quality of life. Whereas while there is still much work to be done to eliminate disparities in services and increase education about mental illness, Napa County service providers are to be commended for their collaborative approach when working with individuals in need. Whereas the benefits of mental health services provided by Napa County and local nonprofit organizations recently were on display following the October fires, as well as the tragic shooting on March night at the California Veterans Home. Therefore be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, mayor of the town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be just, if you would, please.
I just, I am Rowena Korobkin, and I am representing the Mental Health Board of Napa County. The Mental Health Board is an all-volunteer board. It's required that every county have one, and our purpose is kind of oversight of the division of mental health, which is set aside in California as the, where people with serious mental illness get their services, because most, health insurance doesn't pay for care for serious mental illness. It's the county, it's your county, our county that does that. The Mental Health Board participates in many things in the Mental Health Division, will help them with grants. We have helped them choose contractors for big proposals. For example, our new crisis intervention service that we have, a crisis stabilization unit at the New Health and Human Services campus. We do all kinds of things. We bring to the Mental Health Division information that we gather by research about what the county might be able to do that would improve things, or what things are problems, and have presented our papers to the Board of Supervisors. So, we really play an important role, and the reason that I'm up here saying all that is, and for all of you, that we need more members of the Mental Health Board. It's a commitment of once a month, board meeting, and then other things. We do site visits to programs and lots of different things, but anyone that has an interest in helping out as a board member for the county, please go on the Napa County site, the website for Napa County. You'll find Mental Health, you'll find the application to be a board member, and please come join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Frank?
Hi, I'm Frank Smithwaters. I'm co-executive director of Caring Community Compassion Incorporated. We're one of many nonprofits that in particular over the next month are participating in a lot of special activities in the county. We actually are cosponsors of an event this coming Monday, the 7th, which is called the Consumer Speaks Conference. It is predominantly put together, hosted by and operated by folks that are from the mental health community that suffer from many, many different psychiatric disabilities. Consumer Speaks Conferences historically have been held throughout the state for many, many years, fell out of favor over the past 20 years, basically because counties didn't have the money to fund those. So in our county, we were very fortunate that not only was our nonprofit able to pick up the cost of that, but the county has kicked in as well. So once again, you're seeing the opportunity for many consumers to come together in a setting with other providers and community members that are interested in what's happening in mental health. If you go to, once again, go to the county website, you'll see a number of special activities that are happening this month regarding mental health. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you for being here. And we do have one more proclamation. We get to recognize one of our own team tonight on behalf of an entire industry and much larger effort, where we will recognize May 6th through 12th as Municipal Clerks Week, and I'll invite our clerk to join me up at the podium now.
This is where I stand, I do this.
Yeah, that's a whole different place for you.
I know.
This is a proclamation recognizing Municipal Clerks Week, May 6th through 12th, 2018. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all levels. Whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service with a high level of integrity to all. Whereas municipal clerks stay abreast of the affairs of the office through participation in educational programs, such as new law workshops and City Clerks Association annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas municipal clerks strive constantly to improve the administration of the affairs of the office, consistent with applicable laws and through sound management practices, to fulfill responsibilities to the community and others. Whereas the municipal clerk for the town of Yountville serves as the town's election official, Political Reform Act filing officer, oversees the town's records management program, distributes town council agendas in accordance with the Brown Act, maintains the legislative record of council proceedings, oversees board and commission appointments, provides support to the town council and town manager, and acts as the custodian of the town's seal. Whereas Michelle Dame has served as the town of Yountville Town Clerk since July of 2006, and has worked in municipal government since 1997. Michelle is also a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, the City Clerks Association of California, and the Municipal Management Association of Northern California. Now therefore be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, mayor of the town of Yountville, do recognize the week of May 6th through 12th, 2018, as Municipal Clerks Week, and extend appreciation to all municipal clerks, especially our own, you, Michelle, for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for that recognition. While we have such a large audience attending tonight, I'd like to take this opportunity to share that we are currently recruiting for various boards and commissions. We have two seats on the Yountville Arts Commission open, two seats on our Zoning and Design Review Board, one high school seat on our Park and Rec Advisory Commission. Then we have recruiting for Napa County Local Food Advisory Council, one Yountville representative. We also have the, one recruitment for Napa County Measure A Financial Oversight Committee, and then the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District, one Yountville representative. Currently, Councilmember Dorman's serving on that, but if there's anyone that is interested, she would be happy to share that seat with everyone. You can, if you're interested in applying, you can go to the town's website at www.townofyountville.com and fill out an online application, and those are due May 29th. And then we are hoping to do interviews on either June 19th or July 17th. So if any of you are interested, please take a look at the flyer over there on our website. Thank you.
Thank you. So even when we're recognizing you and your hard work, all you're doing is working hard.
Yes, taking the opportunity right there. You're the best.
Thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you very much.
Next up, public comment. If anyone who's here in the audience would like to address the council on an item not on our agenda, it looks like Mr. Gregory is going to beat everyone else to the microphone.
Were there other people?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Clay Gregory, and I'm the president of Visit Napa Valley, our tourism marketing destination organization for the whole valley. And I'm here today to talk about affordable housing and workforce housing discussions that we've had over the last couple of years, in fact. In the most recent months, we have been evaluating possible funding sources that could achieve a meaningful and contribution, a meaningful contribution toward housing that's affordable for Napa's workplace. Our discussions to date have included lodging properties, other hospitality industry representatives, nonprofit housing developers, housing advocates, and local government officials throughout Napa County. After exploring several funding alternatives, under current consideration is a 1% TOT increase in the form of special tax. So unlike the 12% TOT that goes into a jurisdiction's general fund for municipal services, this special tax would be designated specifically for workforce housing development. If all jurisdictions participated, we estimate that about $5 million would be generated on an annual basis. A special tax requires a vote of the people with a two-thirds threshold for approval. There seems to be interest among several of the jurisdictions to work toward placing a consolidated measure on the November 2018 ballot, which will require each city and town wishing to participate to move relatively quickly toward approving ballot language no later than June 30th. We hope that Yountville will be part of this continuing discussion, and we hope that you will direct your staff to include this matter on your next meeting agenda for discussion and direction, and include the appointment of one staff and one council member to participate in a working session with all of the other jurisdictions on May 23rd. It would be a great opportunity to share Yountville's perspective and hear from the other jurisdictions. In closing, we are proposing a local solution for a local problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clay. And just for those of you that are fairly new to the protocols here and our process, we're not allowed to get into a dialogue on anything that's brought up during public comment, so we'll just take that under advisement. Staff is aware of it, council's aware of it, and now we'll just, we'll move forward. I'm sure your folks will be talking to our folks. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Anyone else like to speak to the council on an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no others, we'll go ahead and move from public comment to our consent calendar. And just as a reminder, we did have the minor modification of the resolution that's part of Item 7B, so we are looking to have action on the consent calendar, Items 7A, B, and C. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda, consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm waiting for the button to work. Do a, do a, do a.
Go ahead and do a voice second, and Michelle's gonna make it. See, again, she's doing all the work for us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That does pass unanimously, and there's the confirmation. Okay, moving on from our consent calendar, we have no other presentations or public hearings. Our first administrative regular item, sports courts. I have a feeling we have a couple people in the audience about this. It's not just your t-shirts that give me that impression.
It's our fitness, right?
That's right. It's all the paddles you all walk in with. I'll start with a staff report, please. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight we have, for your consideration, adoption of a resolution to award the bid for the construction of the sports courts improvements at Vineyard Park, and award a construction contract with Vintage Contractors for $295,960, and approve a budget adjustment of $150,000 for the total project budget of $350,000, and authorize the town manager to execute these contracts and change orders up to the budget amount. A little background for us, and most of this is also in your staff report and the package that we put together for this staff report. So this project appeared before the town council on June 20th as a part of our five-year capital improvement program. It was approved at that evening's council meeting, which consisted of resurfacing and restriping the Vineyard Park tennis courts. Originally, the project as proposed was gonna resurface existing court with one set of restripped to perform as a multi-use tennis court and four pickleball courts, and then construct an additional set of two new pickleball courts alongside the existing court. However, as we began to do a bit more research, this project has evolved, as we are all aware, and one of the primary mandates that we heard from the council and from members of the community were that they wanted to be able to play on this court around the calendar, and some of the earlier problems that we had with the surface being non-playable during wet weather was becoming more problematic as the surface was deteriorating. So we engaged a few different professionals who do that kind of work, including some contractors. We picked up a few volumes of pickleball court play and began to do a bit of research, and through our research, we very quickly realized that, number one, we weren't gonna have enough funds to complete the project, both with the addition of the additional pickleball court, and to improve the court to be a more year-round playable surface. And the reason for that is, what we came to realize was that the concrete surface, the asphalt surface was contributing to the non-playability. It had deteriorated to the point where groundwater was coming up through the cracks in the asphalt surface, and because of that, it then kind of delaminated the playing surface, which caused bubbles and dead spots. Honestly, during heavier rain periods, that bubbled up to 18 inches higher or more. So it was really more, not even unplayable, it was unsafe to play on it. So we, after some discussion, we evolved into a concrete surface with some drainage improvements, and we're pretty confident that this will help resolve the problems with unplayability. And if you are familiar with that area, there's a concrete basketball court that's adjacent to that tennis court. That court really just requires a bit of cleaning off, a bit of brooming, some water, and it's playable. So that is a really great indicator of what we're trying to do with the improvements on the new sports court. So, March 6th, we came back to you all with a revised plan, eliminating the additional pickleball court, and instead striping one dedicated pickleball court and leaving one tennis court, resurfacing those with the new, with the new playing surface, and of course, the concrete, post-tension concrete surface as the existing, or as the base surface. We solicited a formal day, 30-day bid, I'm sorry, a formal 30-day bid for the project that went out on May, March 20th. We had a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting out on site. A few contractors showed up. We did receive one bid. We had several options for that base, that bid document, so we had the base bid, which included the post-tension concrete surface, the drainage improvements, and a standard playing surface. The alternative, the first alternative was a more resilient surface that we talked about in the last town council meeting before we went to bid. That came in at a bid over $60,000. We also had an alternative to replace all the fencing, and then finally, we offered an alternative to help offset some of the costs, and we asked the contractors if there was a time of the year that would be better for them, that might help them reduce the cost. No price was set for that. The contractor said it wouldn't make a difference to them in terms of timing. This actually is a good time for them to get out, excuse me, to get that bid out. It's before the heavy school season begins and before their heavy season kind of ramps up. So Vintage Contractor was the only bidder. Their bid was considered complete and responsive and responsible. The community did express a consensus for the more resilient playing surface. That added about $61,000. However, we also have a deduction of $17,000 for the original standard surface, so it's an increase of about $44,000 to the original base bid. We chose not to recommend replacing the fence. We're gonna replace parts of the fence that need it, and that was in the base bid, and leave the fencing that's still in good shape alone, and reinstall that fencing after the project is finished. The combined adjusted base bid of $252,000, and the alternate comes out to a total contract price of $295,960. We're also asking for an increase in the budget of $150,000. That will be to help supplement the budget that is in shortfall, and also add a small contingency for us in case there are some unforeseen challenges on that site. We don't anticipate that, but it's a typical process for us to have a contingency. I will say that at current, the Capital Projects Fund 50 has a fund balance of approximately $1.8 million, and of course, any unused project contingency would be returned back to the fund balance. We recommend that the council award the construction of the sports court improvements at Vineyard Park to the lowest responsible bidder, Vintage Contract, and approve a budget adjustment of $150,000 for a total budget, budget, project budget of $350,000. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
You bet.
Questions of the staff report? Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. Um, thank you. Just a quick question or two to clarify, what do you expect the life expectancy of the enhanced surface court to be?
So the base concrete will last in excess of 50 years. That's probably a really conservative estimate. The playing surface is expected to last eight to 12. We don't really know how that's gonna perform based on, it's really based on how much play we get, how many times it floods, and some of the kind of learning curve that we're gonna have to learn how to maintain that surface. But a very conservative estimate would be eight years. The contractor says somewhere in the 12-year neighborhood, so somewhere in eight to 12 years to resurface the court, but the concrete surface would be completely stable for the next 50 years or more.
And the eight to 12, wherever it falls in that range, is more than if we just resurfaced, if we had just done the original asphalt?
That's probably five to six years.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I think, I think it's fair to say that if you look at asphalt as it rests on that playing surface, what most people don't realize is, out on the street, a car tire tends to knead that surface, so it actually helps seal some of the cracks that you see earlier in the life of an asphalt surface. You don't get that same kind of kneading from feet, there's just not enough weight to do that. So it really causes that surface to deteriorate faster than it So, it really causes that surface to deteriorate faster than it would, say, a parking lot or a roadway. So, that's why I'm saying it's five to six years, and we'd be resurfacing that.
Thank you.
On that same vein, I think if you go look at Vineyard Park, you've got two great examples. The basketball court, when it was originally installed, some, almost 35 to 40 years when that park was developed, that's the original concrete base, and we just occasionally need to adjust the surface for that. And then, similar on this, we anticipate that the surface treatment, and the surface treatment is a much lower-cost item than the base, and I think it's a great comparison. Had both of those facilities been built with the concrete, we may not be having the discussion that we're having with regards to the maintenance, but a lower-cost alternative at the time that the tennis courts were built was used, and now we're seeing some of the consequences of that.
Kind of a much more traditional surface in most parks that you see, and many parks are struggling with trying to maintain those asphalt surfaces, and most of them don't have what we have with the water table and the kind of the floodway that that area sometimes becomes with the Popper Creek and the other influences that we have.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of the report? Okay, now's your time. Members of the public, anyone like to address this, or are you just here to listen and hope?
I'm Verlin Chalmers. I just wanna thank everyone for the work that you've put in on this. Joe, you've done a great job at putting this together. I'm aware of Vintage's work on other courts. They're a good company, and we're very enthusiastic about it, but I think the tennis community is enthusiastic about it, too. We have conversations with them over the fence a lot, and we really appreciate your consideration of this.
Thank you very much. And to us, yes, please, come forward. That's it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Myrna David. I've been playing pickleball for the last, oh, maybe year and a half, two years. I also work on a program that is targeted for older adults, and I know when you look around this room, you wouldn't think we were older adults, but some of us, some of us are. And a couple of the key things that are really important when, you know, considering older adults and them aging very well in community and in place, is that they stay active and engaged, both physically and mentally, and I think pickleball does just that. I think another important component, as we age, you know, one of the risks to aging is that people fall, and I think that any attention, great attention, like it appears you're making to make these courts as safe as possible, is really important to us because safety is also key. So, I know that, you know, all these proposals are heading in the absolutely right direction, and I wanna thank you for all your support in the past, and thank you for what you're doing to resurface these outdoor courts, to make them fun and safe to play on for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on this item? Oh, a lot of listeners here this evening. Okay. I'll invite discussion or action by the council. Who would like to start the conversation? Councilmember Doorman?
I know, surprise. So, I have to say that I was kind of a naysayer on this in my mind as this has evolved, but as I look at it now and I've looked at the numbers, it's a big bite to take right now, but it needs to be done. And as for the enhanced playing surface, as we're calling it, when I look at that, a delta of $44,000, again, not a small sum, but when you amortize it over eight or 10 or 12 years, and you look at what we would have to do if we did not have that surface in the way of continuing replacement, y'all know I love my math, so I did some back-of-the-envelope math, and it comes out either a wash or just a little bit of head if we go ahead and do the whole thing now.
Thank you. Councilor Germaine, thoughts? Councilmember Mueller?
I'd just like to say that I have certainly heard from people, why are we building a very expensive pickleball court in town? And the way I view this is that we are actually resurfacing our tennis courts, and we just happen to be striping one of them for pickleball. There's no reason in the future, if pickleball didn't, you know, wasn't as popular as it is today, that we couldn't have it restriped. Is that correct? So, I don't see that we're building a $350,000 pickleball court, but really resurfacing our tennis courts and adding that benefit for one of the courts for, you know, something that happens to be very popular at this moment, and we'll see how it continues, but we have options. So, I can support it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm just absolutely delighted that I can hear everyone laughing and having a great time from my home. And I totally do support it. It's a big bite, but I feel, as my colleagues do, that it's worth it for the exercise, the camaraderie, and the engagement of our citizens, and I totally support it, absolutely.
Thank you. And we've had very many conversations about this. I think you know where this is headed. I would like to just bring up a couple other things. I've been up here long enough to have been part of some of the other more, I'd say, budget-focused or budget-conscious options that just did not work well. As Joe pointed out in his report, this is a very tricky area. Repeat flooding, grade issues, and so it's been challenging because we knew someday it might take a large financial commitment to really do it right. We tried to do it a little bit more cheaply over the last few years, and it just didn't last. So, I think it absolutely makes sense to move forward with this. I also want to thank and show our appreciation for all of you that worked through this process with us. Really showed a lot of respect for the town and your neighbors going through our process, talking to our commissioners through our staff with Park and Recs and Public Works. We really, this is really how it should happen. We have a group of residents, our friends and neighbors, that really would like to see something brought to our community, and it looks like and sounds like we're going to be able to deliver that to our community. So, you should be used as an example of how to affect change in a very positive way. It might be recreational, it might be some other type of service that others are interested in, but I want to commend all of you that helped make this a relatively easy decision for our staff to support and for our council, I believe, to support. So, thanks to all of you as well. With that, if there is no other discussion, is there a motion to be had on this item? Councilmember Doorman, it looks like you're moving fastest.
Okay, I'm pressing my button, but all that aside, I move to adopt Resolution Number 18-3483, awarding the bid for construction of the sports courts improvements at Vineyard Park, Project PK 0017, approving a construction contract with Vintage Contractors, Inc., for $295,960, approving a budget adjustment of $150,000 for a total project budget of $350,000 for the project, and authorizing the town manager to execute the construction contract, change orders, and amendments up to the budget amount.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. We're gonna see if our technology's gonna work for us. While it's working, all in favor of this item?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, that does pass unanimously, so thank you all very much. The courts are open. They are kind of, sort of.
Although, they will be closed temporarily.
Yeah, they will be closed temporarily, right. I'm going to speak slowly for our next item so we can move on to the next thing. Our next item is the Item 10B Municipal Code Update, introduction and first reading of Administrative Enforcement Code.
Yes, mayor and council members. Before you tonight is a revised version of the ordinance that came before you, I think, three meetings ago. During that, there was discussion from the council and direction to staff on possible revisions and questions that were raised. The version that's before you tonight is the exact same versions as the last meeting with the following changes. It specifies that the town's approach to code enforcement is education first. I know that that was a concern and a discussion point from the council, and that's been made clear here in this ordinance, although it leaves open the possibility of fines and penalties if necessary. It clarifies that a town agent or a town employee appointed by the town manager is the code enforcement officer. Previously, it left it open. That specifies that it has to be a town agent or a town employee. That's what the current ordinance says on the books, and so we're just clarifying that that has not changed. The second is to expressly allow payments of fines and penalties by cash. Previously, it had said check or by credit card. This makes it clear that someone could come in here at the front counter and pay in cash in person if they wanted to do so. And then finally, this one increases the appeal deadline from 10 days after the issuance of the notice of violation or citation, from 10 days to 15 days, which is what the current code has. And I believe those were the major talking points and feedback from the council we received. Happy to answer any questions about the ordinance generally. The planning and building director, who also serves as the primary code enforcement officer for the town, is also here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Did you want to add anything to the report before? Okay. Questions? Councilmember Doorman?
Thank you. Thank you all. This, I can see you heard us loud and clear, so thank you very much. Two questions that I have already discussed earlier today with our planning director and our town attorney, and I'll just ask my questions of them again, and then we can talk about it as a council. On the fines and penalties, when they start accruing, my question revolved around whether, when a notice of violation is served, would a fine or penalty, or could a fine or penalty attach at the time the notice was served? Or is there some sort of a waiting period, a cure period? And I'll ask, if you don't mind, our planning director to speak to the response to that.
There are certain notices of violation where we can attach a fine or a penalty immediately, and those are items that can be cleared up with little or no effort. Ones that take longer, such as a building code violation or a zoning code violation, we generally give a time to cure, and once that date passes without correction is when the fines and penalties could attach.
So, would it, I think my real question is, is it better for staff, or is it a non-event for staff if there is some sort of a cure period in there?
In most cases, it makes sense to have a cure period, but for example, noise violations, by the time we go out and let somebody know that they're violating the town's noise ordinance, it's cleared, and in some cases, it makes sense to fine them with the $100, $200, or $500 fine amounts based on the number of those occasions within a certain period. On other times, if they're repeat offenders and there's a more egregious attitude toward it, it's appropriate to do a $1,000 penalty because they've had prior notice of violation. So, it really depends on the violation, and what we try to do is to look at the conditions and when to impose those, what level of penalty is appropriate. So, it's hard to say. It could help if we want a bright line approach where we want to give them 48 hours, but I don't think everything requires 48 hours to cure, and then we don't want to miss imposing violations on something like a noise ordinance violation, especially where it's a repeat activity.
Thank you. And then the second sort of process issue I had is, our existing gives a time certain to pay the fines, like no earlier than, and I was curious as to why that was taken out. And I understand that it's, well, I'll let, I think the town attorney would speak to that of how that works.
Yeah, so the way the ordinance reads before you tonight, the administrative citation has to contain certain information. One of those items is the date that the fine or the penalty is due and payable. Typically, that's the same number of days as the appeal needs to be filed, which is 15, and the reason for that is, an appeal can't be filed unless the fine or the penalty is paid, and that's a requirement to file the appeal. But yes, this currently leaves more discretion to town staff to decide when the fine or penalty is due. It could be beyond the appeal date, it could be a little bit before it, but in any event, it will certainly be paid by the time the appeal is filed unless there's a hardship determination by the town manager.
Thank you.
If I could also on that, we've used a, if we're working with a party, and then the party indicates that they need additional time and we see progress, we work proactively with them in the same ways on several of our, we recently had a home business occupation violation, and we worked with the property owner on a payment schedule and variety of things. So, staff will work with the party and the circumstances and try to be flexible when it's appropriate, especially when the person is working towards the mutual goal of compliance with the code. And I will stress that we use an education and a compliance first rather than a punitive revenue-generating source. This is not a revenue-generating source, and I'll make sure we go over and clearly show that in the budget discussion. In fact, we lose money on code compliance. And the reason we lose money on code compliance is that we spend a significant amount of staff resource first reaching out, trying to resolve it informally, then with education, and then almost all of the cases that the planning director referred to you when we do have a notice of violation, they usually include a very detailed time for cure. And then we have different circumstances, like a noise ordinance, the market sign comes to mind. So, if we put a minimum or a standard, then you lose some of that flexibility, and potentially that violation could continue during that time period, and it may or may not be something that we want to do. So, that would just be a caution that I would phrase, especially when it could be a contractor-working environmental noise-type thing. So, I do want to just echo, not all violations of the municipal code are the same or equal in terms of how we do, but what is the same is our approach towards working towards code compliance.
Councilor Germaine? Any questions in the report? Any other questions in the report? Vice Mayor?
I do, yes. Under 8.05.030, the notice of violation and/or abatement order on D, I think that that sort of runs counter to what you're just saying, which is, so, D, letter D says, "Except as otherwise provided by law or any other ordinance of this town, an enforcement officer may issue an administrative citation without first issuing a notice of violation or abatement." Can you explain that, please?
Yes. The purpose of that is, it's true, there are, most violations of the municipal code could be an administrative citation on the very first offense, the very first day it occurs. Almost all could be. The only exception are building and zoning codes, electrical codes and the like. Those require a notice of violation and a cure and correct period before a citation can be issued. And so, a notice of violation is only required in a limited subset of code violations, but it can be used more broadly or anytime that the town chooses to send a notice of violation instead of a citation as an attempt to educate. And so, what that language was trying to make clear is, you can jump right to an administrative citation if you'd like to, which is why it says "may," but you can also use a notice of violation if you'd like first. So, it's really about options.
And would that, would that case be one where, for example, a noise ordinance was being broken or violated?
Correct. Yes, correct. So, in the case of a noise ordinance, in that example, that could be a notice of violation first to say, here are the requirements of the code, this is when you can use heavy equipment, this is when you can't, here are the hours where it's allowed and when it's not. That could also be an administrative citation immediately, depending on the history of that particular person violating that section. And I know that town staff evaluates all of those factors before deciding whether to issue a notice of violation or a citation.
If I could, Vice Mayor, that's a great example. We have issued, we have several projects, and we, again, using our education compliance first, when we either witness or have verifiable complaints about noise, we educate first. But what we have had to do in a few cases, when the same project, either the project manager is not handling their subs or something, so in this particular, in the last six months, we have issued several citations to contractors for not following the noise ordinance after they've been advised and given a courtesy period. So, I would say, the other thing you're looking at, something more egregious might require an immediate, you know, and noise can be different things. If we have an evening noise situation, we're not gonna sit around and go, you know, can you, we'll come back tomorrow and see if you're still doing it? You know, we may need to take a more immediate course of action. So, that's what I'm saying there. I want you to go back to the preamble section under purpose and intent because that sets the philosophy, and it's much like- the philosophy, and it's much like, what we're talking about here is somewhat of, I'm going to pick on our sergeant, but to a certain degree, it's discretion. You have a range based on the circumstances and the situation and the history. And the staff or the code compliance person looking at the situation will look at it, and in almost all cases, if it's a first-time situation, we really focus on education. If it's the same property coming back and doing the same thing, like an illegal burn, then we move after that into issuance. That helps with trying what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
And I will point out again, we are not, one, we don't have, you know, you'll notice, we have no full-time code compliance officers or an extension of law enforcement out. So most all of our code compliance is complaint-driven or staff follow-up when we're out in our rounds and see things.
And I just want to clarify again that the fine is not increased every day even before the deadline to abate. If there is a deadline to abate, the code, the fine increases once that's passed? Is that correct?
Correct. If there's a deadline and they're given a time to cure or correct, the fine will not stop until they have not, you know, until they've demonstrated that they didn't, let's say a cleanup or something, and the deadline was Tuesday, and we come by on Tuesday and it's not done, then that's when the fine and penalty would start.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions. Another question, Councilmember Dorman?
Sorry, thank you. So just, and I want to confirm my understanding of this, at any point in the process, from however we start, whether it's a notice of violation, administrative citation, whatever, at any point in the process, the fines and penalties, it's discretionary for staff to waive them, as well as the administrative fee that would attach if you go to the appeal process?
Correct.
So it could be that even if something goes on and on, the fines, penalties, and administrative hearing fee could in the end be waived, or as we approach the end could be waived.
And I think that's consistent with what I shared with you, where we have worked with some of them, because again, our goal is compliance, not revenue. Now, there are certain circumstances when a case gets to a certain point where then, and this certainly involves more where we start involving Gary and cost, then, you know, we're getting into a point, but that's a very rare set of circumstances in Yountville. We've had a couple this year, but really that's, so most of it is, you're going to see, again, you know, the planning and building budget is reflecting more time and energy and code compliance, but that's where we're starting to see a need, and that's what the community is expecting and what the council is expecting, so we need to apply sufficient resources towards that. But again, it's not, we'll go through that very clearly on the 8th, but you'll see that it is not a moneymaker, and we don't intend to make it a moneymaker.
Any member of the public like to speak to this item? Seeing no one move forward, action by the council. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 18-471, and ordinance the town, counsel the town of Yountville amending chapter 8.05 of Title VIII of the Yountville Municipal Code regarding administrative enforcement and waive the reading.
Is there a second? Are we going to keep doing this verbally? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much to our staff. Next up, discussion and possible direction to authorize me to sign a letter in support of federal legislation to establish a national emergency medical services memorial. Go ahead and start with.
Yeah, very briefly, Mayor, I'll also defer to Councilmember Dorman shortly, but the request here is for the town to provide a letter of support for the National EMS Memorial, and Councilmember Dorman and I went through our protocols to make sure that the request was consistent, and we've come to the determination that it is, because it's reflecting on the individuals serving the community. We also have a unique situation here with a Yountville twist, where a local resident is involved on the project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, and Councilmember Dorman can expand a bit more.
Thank you. And I really don't have much to add other than the staff report, but we do have Mr. David Camlin in the audience tonight, and I think he would give us most of the information we need to make a decision on this.
Okay, before we invite him up, just before we invite you up, hold on just a sec. Yeah, wait. I know you're anxious. You want more code enforcement talk, I know.
I'm the new guy here.
Yeah. Any questions before we entertain? Okay, now come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is David Camlin. I'm a paramedic, and I'm on the board of the National EMS Memorial Foundation, and also, as noted earlier, a new resident here in Yountville. First off, I would like to take a moment to thank Councilmember Carrie Dorman and Sergeant John Hallman for their assistance in my efforts here today. The National EMS Memorial Foundation is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. Our sole purpose is to establish a permanent memorial in Washington, DC, to honor, recognize, and remember the commitment, service, and sacrifice of the nation's EMS heroes who have died in the line of duty, and for those who continue to serve. Emergency medical services is considered one of the most dangerous jobs in the United States today, with recent statistics showing that EMTs and paramedics are two times more likely to suffer a line-of-duty death than any other profession. Every day, EMS professionals leave their loved ones at home and head out to help people they have never met. Some will never return. Each year, dozens of EMS providers are killed in the line of duty. These men and women give everything so that others might live. We as a nation and as a community must honor these enduring sacrifices. While public safety officers from law enforcement and the fire service have been recognized for their sacrifice with national memorials, the men and women of EMS have gone without recognition for far too long. It is our foundation's mandate to finally give these silent heroes a fitting memorial so that their loved ones and coworkers have a permanent place to remember those that have been lost. Pursuant to the Commemorative Works Act of 1983, our foundation has already acquired the needed approval from the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission, as well as the approval and full endorsement of the National Park Service upon whose land this will be built in the District of Columbia. We also have met with and obtained the approval of Senator Feinstein and Congressman Mike Thompson here locally. Earlier this year, as part of the process, we introduced bills in both the United States House of Representatives and the US Senate to authorize our foundation to undertake the effort of designing and creating the memorial. Both bills have been unanimously approved by the respective subcommittees and committees without amendment, and are now headed to the floor of both houses of Congress for a vote in the upcoming weeks. These two pieces of legislation do not involve any taxpayer funds, as that will be done and carried on by the foundation, including a separate fund given to the National Park Service to handle maintenance in perpetuity. This will be done via donations and corporate sponsorships. These two bills simply authorize our foundation to build a memorial and nothing else. My colleagues and I, along with EMS workers across this nation of ours, request your support for this worthy endeavor. Please help us recognize the enduring ideals of commitment, service, and sacrifice embraced by these EMS workers, and the ultimate sacrifice already made by more than 650 of our nation's citizens. EMS is a crucial element in America's critical infrastructure and homeland defense strategy. In this day and age, lives are saved in increasingly dangerous places. In closing, I would like to remind everyone that these brave citizens who gave everyone, gave everything are someone's grandfather or grandmother, someone's mother or father, someone's son or daughter, and even someone's grandson or granddaughter. These people in EMS, they are our neighbors, they serve our community along with other first responders, and it's time for us to remember them. I appreciate your time, and thank you for your consideration. And obviously, we'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Yeah, thank you very much for your comments. Are there any questions? I think you made it pretty clear, actually, and really did a thorough job of explaining the effort, so thank you very much for that.
We definitely appreciate your guys' consideration. This is consistent with anyone we talk to. A lot of folks aren't aware of this, but when they are, it's usually a very supportive. So definitely appreciate it, and definitely appreciate living here in Yountville. This is a great town, and appreciate the work you folks do.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this? Yes, Sergeant?
John Hallman from the sheriff's office. That's just a little fun with Dave. I just wanted to say I absolutely support it, it's honorable, and a lot of people don't know, but when we as sheriff's department or law enforcement officers go out, and I can speak for our jurisdiction, when we go out like on a SWAT call-out or a hostage negotiation team call, something to that effect, typically SWAT is always deployed. And thankfully, for years, when we deploy, we don't deploy alone. We literally have EMT or EMS professionals that are embedded in our unit, in our armored cars, they're literally at the scene with us. So if we're up at a door, they're there. They're armored up, they have helmets, they look like us, so you wouldn't know it on the news, but they are literal, I mean, they're literal heroes. They're right there with us to make sure that if we get in major harm's way, they're dragging us to the side and they're working on us. But also, if we engage a citizen that is at a dark place in their life, or a victim, they're there working on them. So they're there, right there, risking their lives without guns, to basically take care of us, all of us. So I just wanted to throw my support of that as well, so I'll let you know that. All right.
Thank you, Sergeant. Anyone else? Councilmember Dorman, unless there's further discussion, is there discussion? Would you like to entertain a motion?
I would, thank you. I don't even know, I don't think I have a button here. Okay, so I will, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Mayor Dunbar to sign a letter in support of federal legislation to establish a national emergency medical services memorial.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you very much for sharing your service with our community, and welcome, a belated welcome to Yountville. Thank you very much. And Councilmember Dorman, thank you also for kind of spearheading the effort from our perspective. We're going to move on now to discussion and possible direction on small community projects, ad hoc committee, and request for funding.
Yes, Mayor, council, I'll briefly introduce this and then turn it over to the ad hoc committee. The request today has two parts. One is, as we're in budget finalization and discussions, the ad hoc committee is requesting $10,000 be included in this year's upcoming budget for fiscal year 18, 19, to implement the program. And then in the staff report, and they'll go over in more detail, they're going to talk about where we are in the status of some of their discussions of the program, and I think we're getting close, and there's a few areas that need a little more vetting before they would launch, but recognizing that needed to get the item in front of the council, especially as it related to the potential for funding. And with that, I'll turn it over.
Which of you is going to pick up on this? Yes, Councilmember Dorman?
So this came up for us during Mr. Peter Kajiyama's presentation that he did for In Vision Yountville, and at the time, he spoke of getting the community involved, and I'm going to say this quote, because I think it really spoke to us, is, "As cities begin thinking of themselves as engaged in a relationship with their citizens, and citizens begin to consider their emotional connections with their places, we open up new possibilities." And this was all then to move forward with, if you were given $500, what would you do to increase the happiness for and of the town of Yountville? So Councilmember Dorman and I thought that this would be a good point moving forward for our community, for the town of Yountville. We have the Small Community Projects Ad Hoc Committee, and we've been meeting to develop and shape what this would look like for our community. And one of the important things is that I see this as creating projects that engage the relationship between the town, community, and those visiting, and make a difference in, in addition to or reinvent something in Yountville. So what we're working on now is that the projects or initiatives should meet all, most or all of the following: contributes to the community, benefits all of our town, engages community members, makes a happy town, serves a need, is thought-provoking or humor-inducing, generates joy, and it can be a temporary installation, and it increases the Yountville happiness outlook. That's a gauge that I made up when I was writing this. So we're still finalizing some of the final details, but what we would do is have an application process of two times per year. We'll develop an application form, we'll develop the eligibility requirements for the project funding, which would include the description of the project, funding amount request, whether or not it is a one-time or longer-term project, if it'll require ongoing maintenance, cost of the ongoing maintenance, what it will require from the town staff to support, to execute, and implemented as well. Our grants would range from $500 to a maximum of $1,500. We would also give examples of eligible products and give examples of activities or projects that are not eligible for funding. So we want to keep the application process and implementation process simple, and we want to keep it simple for the town staff as well. So what we're still working out is just the main application, as well as exactly, this ad hoc committee, unfortunately, will become a permanent committee and no longer ad hoc, so we're trying to determine exactly what will make up that committee as well. We need, because of the budget coming up, we though need to discuss it now so that we can get it in the budget for the next discussions, for the meetings.
So is the assumption that you would have a mix of council, potentially town staff, and then residents as part of this committee, or not?
We were going to, sorry, I'll speak for myself. We've gone back and forth over this. My assumption was, we wanted to keep, not burden town staff with it, and based on what the applications were, then channel it to the right staff to gain their, to gain their input and their feedback on it, not necessarily have town staff on it, have to review every single one if it wouldn't be under their purview.
Outside residents, or it just council?
We're still going back and forth about residents.
Okay.
I have a question.
Other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Moller?
Okay, technical for the mayor, I mean, for the attorney. Standing committees, does that mean it's going to be subject to the Brown Act and has to be noticed?
Yes. Even standing committees of less than a quorum are subject to the Brown Act, and ad hoc committees with members in addition to council members would also be subject to the Brown Act. So an ad hoc committee that had a staff members, a member of the committee, for example, would be subject to the Brown Act. And so for that reason, you might consider having only two on it while it's an ad hoc, and having, inviting staff to come and participate.
So how long can it stay an ad hoc, and then when does it transition to a standing committee?
And I think Councilmember Moller, that's one of the reasons, I think we need to, to be honest, if it's going to be going on, meeting several times, and then going on on a yearly basis, my recommendation is that we just start from the start that it is no longer an ad hoc and it's a standing committee because it has a regular purpose, and it's, you know, the administrative side of that is not that complex, but it does change the nature of that, and then it's still a discussion of whether there's community members or not added to the committee.
So one other question then, can, when this just gets rolled out, could you just continue the ad hoc during a, what we consider a trial period, and, you know, roll it out and see what happens? It really is kind of like the Arts Committee that really kind of then took off, is there some point that we could then make that decision besides, you know, otherwise we would be, we're talking about $500 projects here, and you're, you know, we might have, you know, to get a real committee, a possibility, we have to go through all these interviews and everything, and we don't really know what we have yet. So what could we do to establish that, you know, after a year of nobody applies, or you get one, why form this whole standing committee? So that's where I'm struggling with, how to do that. And I know you're going to talk about it more, just.
A standing council committee does not mean it's a board or commission. I want to be really clear on that. That just means, much like some cities have standing committees that meet on a regular basis, so one option is just that you continue, and I certainly think we could go a period, you know, a six-month period for the first cycle, but I do want to make clear, when I I talk about a standing committee, we're not talking about a citizen board or commission.
Okay. So you have the options to discuss.
Right, and that's the discussion that the ad hoc is having about, for that same reason, that it may be too premature to move to that broader base, but that, you know, if there's regular activity of a standing council committee, they would be responsible for the screening and recommendations. So that's, that's part of that further discussion.
Okay. Vice Mayor, question?
Yes, I do have a question, and that is, has there been any discussion about folding this into the umbrella of the Yountville Foundation?
To the, well, I'll defer to say, no, we haven't, but I'm also going to say, this one, it doesn't work that way, because you, the council is doing this for a community purpose. So, you know, you'd either, I just think, if the council has an interest in creating the community projects and the process for it, then that needs to be yours, because remember, the community foundation, you know, if you gave them 10,000 and said, run with the program, you'd still end up with town staff having to administer all of the program because that's not how that foundation is set up.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Councilmember Dorman, did you have anything to add at this moment?
No, I thank you, Councilmember Muller, for the question on the standing versus ad hoc, and I do see, if it can work that way, while we're getting up and running, it would probably be better to remain as an ad hoc, like as Town Manager said, through the first cycle. I think that might be a good way to work it.
Absolutely, but we don't know what we have yet.
Right.
Like, we might have one, we might have 20, 50 projects, you don't know what you're trying to manage.
The famous question, is there there there?
Right. Okay. Well, I have a feeling that if we're offering people money to do something, there'll be some people that will do something with that money. I'm guessing.
For the benefit of the community. We definitely hope so.
Not only that, but to increase the Yountville happiness outlook.
It'll go like this. It will. It will.
Any members of the public?
Sounds like a project to me.
Yeah. Members of the public like a comment? Seeing none, I would offer either further discussion, or if either of our ad hoc members would like to lock themselves into this ad hoc committee by making a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend Councilmember Dorman and Councilmember Durham, the members of the Happiness Factor Ad Hoc Committee to determine our happy factor.
And the funding?
And approve $10,000, single-time funding.
I think the ad hoc committee already exists, so we really, this is really only about the $10,000 funding of that effort, correct, Carrie?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's just on the funding right now.
And that's being included in the budget as a discussion item. That's where we're at.
For the next year's budget.
So we're going to recommend it goes into the budget for further confirmation at budget time?
Yes, this is discussion and direction for this item.
Right.
I'll second that.
So as opposed to actually approving the expense, this is to have a placeholder for our budget discussion, that we'd like to see $10,000 allocated for further discussion and potential adoption? Steve's not looking, Steve looks like he needs a little happiness boost over here about this. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No? That passes. Thank you for your effort to date and ongoing efforts on that. That takes care of our administrative, regular items. Thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you.
Staff informational reports, flood control, water conservation, nothing really of note, so we'll move right ahead to Napa Valley Transportation Authority. I believe Councilmember Dorman has a report from our meeting.
Yes, thank you, and I'm going to try to make it brief, but I am reporting on the both March and April meetings. We met as the tax agency, we approved the Measure T projects. Measure T, we've already talked about, but to refresh memories, is, was approved by the voters in 2012. It's a half-cent sales and use tax for supplemental road maintenance projects. Yountville expects to get between $400,000 and $500,000 a year for the projects that we've had approved. We're also, are participating in a state Route 37 transportation study. Why would we do that as Napa County? That is because when it floods or is otherwise, something happens to it, it's diverted onto our roads, and we want to look at that. To help out Yountville, this will help out Yountville directly also, we approved a list of on-call engineers and architects, which will save us time and money in some of the projects that we work on here in town. We appointed some new committee members, Paratransit Coordinating Council and the Citizens Advisory Committee. Also, on the website, there is a comprehensive operations analysis that looks at things like, and we set our goals for that, things like wait times, on-time performance, service route, service routes. And they also approved the budgets for both fiscal years 2018-19, a budget of around $29 million, and 2019-20, a budget of around $18.5 million, and both of those include depreciation and capital. And I think Councilmember Muller, who attended with me the April meeting, has a further update.
A further update is that Caltrans, yes, it's true, Caltrans is actually repaving Highway 29 from Tranqus to Me Lane just south of St. Helena. The work is going to start today, May 2018, and this will continue on until the fall. Most of the work will occur at night. We will be asking the public to be patient while Caltrans repaves this work. And so I have a nice flyer, I recommend we, might want to put something on our website or hang it up wherever, there you have it, so.
Is that it? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a report from Upper Valley Waste Management Authority?
No, I reported on that last time, our next meeting's in two weeks.
Okay. League of California Cities Legislative Action Days, I'll report on that, as well as my State Board of Directors meeting that ran concurrently. We did, a large group of us, go into the Capitol and meet with our legislators. One of the key issues that's still being discussed is SB 1, which is the transportation funding bill that has opposition, that is gathering signatures to be recalled this year. There was a deadline of, I think, today for projects to be submitted that would be part of, receiving part of those funds. That would be a significant, have a significant negative impact on our ability to deliver additional transportation projects. I'm sure Joe is intimately aware of all of the details of this, this bill. Also, I'll just quickly skim through some notes from my Board of Directors meeting that overlaps with that time in the Capitol. At the Board of Directors meeting, we did have a visitor, for almost an hour, Governor Brown came and spoke to our board. It was quite entertaining, actually. Not only did he speak by a variety, about a variety of pending bills, but he seemed to take, maybe he had the happiness outlook pills that you have. He was in a very jovial mood that morning, but he was very engaging. Yes, closing, he's a short timer in the, in the office. We continue to discuss the four main goals of the League this year: public safety, pensions and retirement benefits, protecting transportation funding, that SB 1 funds that I just mentioned, and housing and homelessness. There are at least 70 bills related to disasters, whether they be our fires, mudslides, and others, that are looking for funds from the state. So that is going to be a very aggressive season of bills. Also updating, supporting Prop 68, which is providing money for parks, water, and climate environment protection. Prop 69 prevents borrowing of transportation funds for projects that are not involved in SB 1. SB 3, which would provide $4 billion in veteran and affordable housing bonds, that is expected to go forward with $1 billion expected for veterans funding, and the rest for general affordable housing. There is also what I would consider a very dangerous bill being proposed, which is called the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of 2018, which would require every single fee or tax that we and any other entity would propose, that would require a two-thirds vote. So, if we wanted to change our, our pool fees, it would take a four-fifths vote of our council, for example, if you'd like to have any other type of tax or fee, so that is being discussed in Sacramento. We also did appoint Jan Arbuckle, who's from Grass Valley, to the first vice president position. Randon Lane from Murrieta City Council appointed the second vice president position. And I also, I am one of three applicants for the next second vice president position for Northern California, interviews happening in June at our board meeting in Monterey. So we'll see how that goes. That's my report from League issues. Does anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Please. Yes, I would like to report on my League of California Cities meeting from Pomona on, in April, April 12th, and essentially about SB 1. The Revenue and Taxation Committee is predicting that it will have enough signatures and will be on the ballot. So that's, you know, it's, even some of the members of that Revenue and Taxation Committee were anti SB 1. So it's an interesting dilemma that we are facing. The other issue that we talked about was a business roundtable to talk about, the inequity in taxation, sales tax that is collected by cities, being redistributed, sales tax on items that are ordered over the interview, over the internet, are now at the clearinghouse area where the orders come in, they get the sales tax if there is any, excuse me, and they're trying to reach an agreement with all of the cities that there be some sort of revenue sharing or some sort of, with the destination cities, meaning really where the sale initiated. So that's, that's going to be a long process. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any other reports from the council? I did want to recognize Samantha and all of our Park and Recs team, our Public Works team, our Arts Commission for another exceptional and entertaining Yountville art sip and stroll on Saturday. Got a little, little dicey about the weather, the weather finally just stopped messing with us and allowed us to have a cool but really wonderful Saturday of music, food, wine, just social time. So thank you again for another successful event, and let the Arts Commission know that we appreciate all their efforts also.
That was outstanding.
I believe that takes care of our business for tonight.
Actually, Mayor, council, I have two quick announcements. No? I was waiting to see.
Council meeting reports, comments? I see nothing about Town Manager.
Yes, and this would be, I want to remind the community on your behalf, because I'm sure it's just an oversight, but on May 5th, we have the community-wide yard sale, and on the following Saturday, May 12th, we have the community cleanup event.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would like to bring up something for the council's consideration. Councilmember Dorman and I have had some informal conversations about how to inform, involve, and educate our community regarding emergency preparation and response, and we would like to see a townwide workshop at some point. And I would like to request that this be agendized for the next meeting, and that at the next meeting, we consider appointing an ad hoc committee. Councilmember Dorman and I have volunteered for that committee, but I'm asking that we do have that on the agenda and discuss it then.
Steve, or maybe this is a question for the Vice Mayor, do you expect to have content for such a discussion within two weeks, or actually a week? Because that's when it would need to be agendized. Or could it be a date to be determined?
Here's what I would say, I think I want to, the intent is to establish the ad hoc committee to work on developing some of the information and the elements that would go together. So I mean, that's what your staff report's going to really talk about, and we're going to sit down and look at some existing staff reports.
But we need to understand what their task is, and it's not to set county-wide policy. If it's set...
No, no.
I know, I'm just saying, if it's meant to establish what protocols are in place for the town, that's, and you can put those in place in a staff report in the next week, you know, then we can move forward. I'm just saying it might take longer than seven days to get a staff report ready. If not, then we can consider it.
We'll see where we're at on that, but I think we can, and again, it's a framework that I would say your council's going to be approving for the work that the ad hoc would do. And aim more on the information sharing side of things, and how do we educate and advise our residents, I think is the real intent and focus, if I'm not...
Exactly. As, you know, the county is having meetings and workshops, but we've had some substantive conversations about, you know, what we would like to see, but we would like to just really concentrate on presenting the framework and establishing the ad hoc committee to fill in the gaps on the framework.
Okay. Council, is there such a direction? Is there support for that kind of direction? Non-councilmembers, Dorman and Vice Mayor? So, yes, is that correct? Or Councilmember Muller?
Well, I'm still, just, I guess we'll find out at the meeting, that's where, I think it's the same question that you just had, in terms of, I know I'm involved in participating in what the county is doing, so how do we, how's that going to work exactly? Because they...
So what I'm hearing is, we have two councilmembers that are willing to put in that background work to let us know how that's going to work, if we are going to move forward with the committee to address this in more detail.
So, they're going to tell us about what the county is doing?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Dorman?
Sorry, thank you. So, our thinking is, we really are going to be Yountville-centric about what Yountville can do, and we don't have it fleshed out yet, but it's, it's in the nature of how Yountvillians can prepare, how we can communicate after and during an event. It's, it's very limited to Yountville, and mostly on education, preparation, communication, not so much on the emergency, the county, the state, that kind of response. It's, it's our own housekeeping in here.
Which, that's why I'm going to be attending something tomorrow, then the county is doing pretty much that, so that, that's what I was trying to get the handle on, just because I'm, that's the one that Brad Wegge...
It sounds to me like, going forward, if we determine that there's something there again, that the ad hoc committee could organize that type of information, maybe even have a representative from the county to speak at a future date. But right now, we're talking about, how do you contact your neighbors? And how do you let them know the community center is open or not? And what do you have to do to, you know, protect yourself in certain circumstances? It's very fundamental. So, we might get our law enforcement, our CalFire partners involved to have conversation, but we don't know any of those elements yet. We're just saying, are we interested? If yes, then they, they're volunteering to lead that effort.
Okay, so it might be very simple, very similar to what the county is talking about tomorrow.
It is, and I also am going to the one tomorrow night.
Our attorney has something to say about this.
Yeah, I just, I would encourage the council to have a more in-depth discussion when it's on the agenda.
Okay. All right, then, let's do that.
So, yes, it's okay to add this to the agenda, and if it makes it to the next one, great. If not, it can certainly be after that.
All right, it will be the 15th or the first one in June, depending on timing.
Okay. Is there any other business for the council? I don't see any. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our next meeting, which is a budget workshop special meeting on Tuesday, May 8th, at 8:30 in these chambers. Says 8:30 right here. 9:30, okay. 9:30. Is there a motion? Motion?
9:30, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That passes. See you on May 8th.